Okay, Commissioner Bovers is standing in for the rest of the ones that we're missing today. We'll call the meeting order at five thirty-one P M on March first, twenty twenty-three. The first thing is normally a roll call, so I'm present. Go ahead and go around the room.
Commissioner Tiel is here.
Commissioner Albert's here.
Commissioner Tramalata.
Commissioner Bovers.
And then from staff.
Mike Perry.
Rebecca Demme.
Jamie Burrell.
And we have our consultant with us.
Caitlin Huppers with Blue Line.
Okay, uh, doing this memory, but I think we.
Opportunities to cover.
You don't do the.
On the agenda items.
Oh, you don't do the previous meeting minutes?
No.
Oh, okay.
(laughing).
Do we have any, uh, is that opportunities? Thank you. Opportunities of public knowledge on agenda items, so if anyone wants to speak to an item that is not on our agenda this week, good today.
No, sorry.
None. Uh, anyone from the public like to comment on something that is not on our agenda? Okay, let's see, none, we'll close that. And next move on to approval of minutes from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any comments, changes need to be made? Here are none, we'll move on to, uh, approval, here are a vote, or a motion to approve, thank you.
I'll move to approve, uh, the minutes, February fifteenth.
Okay, there are seconds?
Okay, give me a second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sounds like it passes with no nays. Uh, we'll move on to the housing needs assessment and housing action plan open house, the presentation.
All right, and per our agenda, we said the presentation is around six. So the idea was that we would have, um, kind of an open house, and so I guess it could be an opportunity to just have a discussion, maybe ask some questions. Um, and so, I'm Jamie Burrell, I think I've met most all of you, and, um, I've been working with Blue Line, Rebecca, mostly to, um, to work on our housing needs assessment, which is a lot of data, um, that will inform what we need to do to address our housing needs for the next twenty years. And so we've been, we have a survey that went out to the community. At the end of the table, there's a link for that, and we've got a ton of responses, I think over five hundred responses. Um, we've had a series of interviews, and so a big part of it is the stakeholder engagement, um, so there will be a report on that and the findings. Um, once we close the, uh, survey, we'll have a summary of all that, um, along with the interviews. Um, we are working on the housing action plan, which is more of the policies and strategies, and Caitlin's gonna get more into this. I'm just kinda giving you the high level, you know, where we're at today. So we received a grant to do this, um, and then this will all feed into our comp plan update, which is due, um, uh, December twenty twenty-four. So, um, we're gonna continue to have a series of meetings. This will go, you all, planning commission will give a recommendation on the housing action plan, um, and then that will go to council, and they will, you know, mull it over as well.
Not today.
Nope, no, not today.
You don't have the draft, right?
Yeah.
So you're not making it your, no, this is, this is a discussion, she'll have a presentation, we'll have a discussion a little bit about what policies and ideas, what came out of the housing needs assessment and things from the last time we presented it to you, um, that have. So housing needs assessment are validified and are individualized, posted to the website and available for people to look at. And so we really just wanted open, I don't know if you have a set of questions, or, you know, kind of an open house for people to ask us what's going on, what they'd like to tell us, what they'd like to see, tell us their experiences, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we're looking for.
General questions, you know, anything, anything housing related, and that also overlaps a lot of other things, you know, jobs and, um, transit and, um, and we had, the planning commission had that joint meeting with council, um, where Rebecca and I, um, provided some of this that you've seen, just some of the initial data and findings. Um, on our website, we have a housing, um, chap, or a housing page for our comprehensive plan, um, and the, um, uh, North Bend Housing Needs Assessment is on there, um, and so a lot of other good resources. So we're starting to populate that with, with a lot of the documents to date. So I guess from the planning commission, do you guys have comments or questions or?
Yes, I have a procedural question. So we have the public hearing today, which is treated like a normal public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
The open house is still recorded in public, uh.
Yep.
Part of it, but it's meant to be more, you know, casual.
Casual.
Formal, okay.
Yep.
So for any, for anyone in the public who hasn't seen this before, um, uh, the public hearing part of this is typically, you guys have. Three minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it's not a discussion. You, you talk about what you want to say, we listen, we move on, close the public hearing, and then we have a discussion without your input after that. So the difference here with an open house is you, this is meant to be a part of discussion. Because we're having the, the public hearing after, would we be asking for them to restate their issues during a public hearing? Is there any difference between the two?
There is no difference. We, because we don't have a draft document, it really is, it, it really is probably not technically a public hearing, because we don't have a document to have a public hearing on and take public comments on. It, so it, it, you don't have, you don't have to restate it, we're taking notes on everything that's being said. It just, it was, we, we didn't know where we were gonna be when we originally advertised it, and, um, and since we don't have anything that we can make a recommendation on now, we can't really have a public hearing on it. So it, it just, but we have to have a public hearing, because that's how we advertise it. So we have to give people a chance to just wanna come at six thirty, because that's what we advertise, and put their input. We still have to leave that open.
Sure.
But you don't have to restate it, so we will take notes, and we will have a formal public hearing once we have a draft document.
Mm-hmm.
And readvertise it for, as such.
Yeah, so we're thinking if we, you know, if, if everybody has this out, presentation's done, we're, we're kinda done, we can open the public hearing at six thirty, and we can adjourn shortly after that if you want to, or if you wanna continue to discuss, you know, we're here.
Well, then, yeah, so I guess I've heard a few of these in my time, uh, I'm gonna do this from memory, but, you know, this, you guys are lucky to be part of an open house part of this. Normally, like I said, it is more one-sided, uh, we're here to talk, but if you're not familiar, planning commissioners, we're just members of the public too, just like you. Uh, we're volunteers, so we're here to hear what you guys have to say and, um, be your representatives. So it's a great opportunity for you to tell us what you think and be a voice for the public on top of our own. Can I ask, do we wanna start?
Yeah, sure. Does the, does the commission have any questions for us from what they saw previously? And then we can open it to the public, or we can open it to the public first, whatever you'd like to do.
With this assessment, you know, obviously a plan will be coming forward. Um, with the plan, is that for the comprehensive plan? Or will we get into, you know, what zoning these needs should be going into? Is it, you know, just a broad, general plan?
Right.
Or are we getting into the, you know, kind of?
We won't be getting into the nitty-gritty. The nitty-gritty will come back with the housing element, um, but it will have some other policy barriers that, that, that would or should or could be incorporated into the housing element that removes other barriers. For instance, one example could be, um, right now we have an old, um, accessory dwelling unit code that requires someone to be an owner occupied in one of the units. So a recommendation could be to remove that requirement. So it, that's nitty-gritty, because it's a code change, but it won't get into rezones or densities or things like that. It'll be what other barriers, um, there may be a recommendation that there's a look at our densities and allowable uses as part of that, but we have to do that anyways. So, um, but we'll have those listed options, but it is a little bit higher than policy.
Yeah, and what the, what the state has done, commerce has said, we have to include more information in our housing element that we don't currently have, and so that's why they provided the funding to get this information to then.
Yeah.
Inform us and inform the community.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very useful so that, you know, if we do feel that ju, that zone changes need to happen, then there's something backing that.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, but, but that said, you know, if you look at our zoning for our city, there are some areas that it probably wouldn't make sense to do multi-units, and some areas that do make sense, and so I think that that's important for us all to remember as we go through this, that just because we're like, oh, this is a need, it doesn't mean that the entire city is going to be built out.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, the, the current law says we have to plan for and accommodate. We don't have to build it, we have to plan for and accommodate, so we have to make sure we have enough land to meet our housing need at all income brackets. And usually that means that the lower income bracket's a higher density than single family.
I had a question on the, um, future housing gap.
Yep.
Dig into that a little bit more in the presentation as well, but I noticed that the low income and the extremely low income are the highest deficit that we'll have, uh, for twenty forty-four growth. And just a reminder, like, what are the opportunities available to make that possible, so that developers, you know, have the need to actually provide that type of housing?
So usually extremely low, very low and low income, well, mostly extremely low and very low. Get grouped together in terms of the type of housing and density you need. The difference comes into subsidies.
Yeah, they're not gonna do that in our own.
No, and we're gonna need a lot of financial support, federal.
So, so we're not, we're not required to have a financial subsidies, but we have to show the density at, that would be needed with financial subsidies to meet those income groups. And from what I've seen from the commerce recommendations, they basically, low income and extremely.
Very low income.
And extremely low income would be, you can almost consider them together.
Yeah.
(laughing).
Does the commerce require any sort of jobs report for us, in conjunction with what that percentage shows up? Like, we are planning and accommodating for that group, but are there even? How do we, how do we determine whether those people could even afford to work in our town, like if we're not getting some main jobs for?
We already know we, we have more low income jobs than we have people to work them in here.
We have some analysis of that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did an economic development plan, we did lots, that said everyone's leaving our city or coming. We basically have the same amount of people leaving our city to work as coming in into our city to work. And so we, we don't ha, we, we do know that we need to accommodate, plus the state's telling us we need to meet these, these numbers, whether we have the jobs or not.
Right, 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 but I'm saying, you, you, what you previously said is we just have to plan for it.
Correct.
To accommodate.
Yep.
Um, within that, is there any requirement for, uh, from commerce for, like, a jobs report for that in it?
So there, there is job growth, but it doesn't, it doesn't work.
It doesn't get down to the income.
It doesn't get down to income levels, it doesn't get into the nitty-gritty, that unit, yeah.
But you know, if you provide more range in housing, you will get more range in jobs at the range.
People can live here and work here and not have to drive.
That will help balance, they'll help balance each other out.
Yeah, that's a lot of what we heard so far in our public comments and discussions, that people are having a hard time hiring lower income levels, because it's too far to drive from where they can afford to live.
Yeah, we have, I think we said in our other report, or maybe that eight, about eighty-nine percent, or eighty, it's in the eighties, commute out every, that live in North Bend commute out to their jobs, and then the converse is true. The people that work in the town.
Maybe those, all of them are coming from somewhere else.
Our imbalance is that we have too many or not enough high-paying jobs within North Bend and not enough affordable housing.
Yeah.
So regardless, so we planned this out, this is twenty-year plan that we.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what's the state's position? We present this plan, but we don't have water, I guess, to solve for it.
So right now in our, we do have to plan for utilities and talk about them, but from a, from the perspective of our land use, we're just looking at land use available to build, so then we have to come up with other.
But do we have to prove that we can deliver?
So there, there is a way to put a percentage on what's developable due to restrictions. So when we did a la, we did, three years ago now, a compass of land to, you know, buildable lands. We said what's buildable based on the availability of stuff, and, and you, you take a percentage of areas that don't have utilities now, because it's not buildable immediately, that doesn't mean it won't be buildable in the future. So there is kind of a calculation that's done for things that aren't immediately buildable, but could be available in the future. Because obviously nothing is, necessarily has to be ready on day one, but it has to have a plan.
So then is there any point, is there any, that twenty-year period when our plan shows up that we're, we could potentially fall out of compliance with, with that plan in any way?
So this time the law has added a five-year review, but I don't know, we don't know exactly what that's going to incorporate. And I don't think utilities is one that usually gets.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna be if we didn't follow the run of any of the policies we decided to on in, in the housing element, I think is where we're gonna get into non-compliant, not. Like, if we say we need to rezone something, we don't rezone it. That's where we'll follow the compliance. I don't think the continued negotiation of a water plan is going to be something that they're gonna tag our entire plan as non-compliant.
Yeah, it's a five-year mid-cycle and then a ten-year.
Ten-year periodic update.
Periodic update is the schedule.
In the past, it was every eight years, and there was no mid checkpoint. They, they extended it to ten years and added a five-year.
And then typically, like, our, our capital facilities plans are usually six years, those are still at six. So then that's where we establish what project can we fund and do, what are we going out for grants for, and then our impact fees to keep all those projects going in the pipeline. Other, any comments from?
Yep, anybody have anything to say about?
So I'll speak briefly as a new resident, we live here in North Bend. I love, can't phrase this like, easy to find, hard to leave. Like, easy to find, hard to leave, ready, healthy and safe while you're here. Affordable housing is about health first and foremost. Lack of that becomes a social issue as well as a economic development issue. And sometimes I take a deep breath and I went a year, I'll be brief, went a year, just bought local, lived local, just had great fun going everywhere. And my awkward question was, hi, new neighborhood where you live. I began to position a personal map of where people live, you're on target with your numbers. And the sadness around that is, uh, most of them have two jobs. And I think that becomes an issue of economic development, all kinds of about management, land management. I trust the path forward equals some direct decision-making that can be collaborative with the snow valley. I also buy things in Dubal and ask the same question, I go, really? You work where? But where, you live in Dubal? So, just a small point, uh, we love this place. We go to Bellevue a lot, we love that place too, but I gotta tell you something, you're more in the town between the casino and the truck stop. And people are beginning to say, whoa, this is foreseen, and, too, it's the opportunity.
Thank you.
Definitely curious when you guys think you're gonna have, I know this is like a twenty-year plan type thing. This problem's been here for a long time, um, and so just curious when, when you're expecting to start seeing some, you know, more affordable for those people that are, are missing out on living here in the valley, because they can't afford to. When you think, is, are there, or I know there's a view of things going on with apartments and, and, you know, subsidized, but I'm just curious if there's going to be more, and when you guys expect to be able to do that.
Well, we, obviously we do have Habitat Pre-Humanity going in, um, we do have River Run going in, which has a percentage of affordable housing. Um, however, the city does not build the units. So we have to wait for an applicant or partner with someone to build. We are looking, uh, working with the regional coalition, um, to look at pooling some of our money together, um, and seeing if we can be more proactive and partnering with some people to build, um. But we don't know what the timeline on that would be, we, we, you know, we need agreements and all of that. But in terms of this, this ten-year plan, twenty-year projection, we can't predict when property owners will sell their property to someone who wants to build something else.
Well, I, I guess that's another question, is does the city have lands that they can, you know, be able to give to a development, or is that not? I, I don't, I don't know how that works.
We don't really, we have one par, possible parcel that's developable, all the rest are parks and deed restricted, and are, and, or have city hall and wastewater treatment plant. So we don't, uh, have land, part, one of the policies could be to use our tax money to try and acquire property so that we can partner. And so that's, like I said, with the partnership of dollars and leveraging, we might be trying to go out and buy property, but we do not own enough property currently.
There is growing interest in the private market, though, to do specific, not necessarily affordable housing, but workforce housing projects. And that's at the higher end of the, um, affordability level, um, meaning it's something that somebody that works here could afford to live, but it's not anything subsidized.
Closer to eighty percent average median in, income instead of a hundred and twenty or a hundred, but not into the sixties or fifties or thirties.
Well, reminding, I don't know the report in front of me, but it was saying the average household in North Bend is only like two points, something, which is really surprising, because I know there's a ton of them.
People per household?
But how many people per household is it?
Mm-hmm.
It was a lot.
I think it was around two point six.
Yeah, so I, I guess one of my, I know the developers aren't, they make the most money building the big homes and.
Yep.
You know, I may get that, but if we are at a two point six, we don't need big homes. We need someone willing to build small, right? I mean, in fact, probably even some that are mini, like, you know, so that they can actually have even smaller. The affordability won't be because it's subsidized, but just because it's small and all, you know. Um, so I'm curious if, if you guys have looked into how to make that be something desirable for developers, because that's what I'm being told, is they try to be affordable and they just, it doesn't, you know, for one, I'm sure they wanna make the most money, but also it's, it's expensive to build here, so then they end up building these big mons, you know, huge homes that we don't really obviously need in North Bend, if we're only at two point six average. I mean, we obviously have a lot of big homes and not enough small ones, so.
Yeah.
A lot of that relates back to zoning, and the city, um, two years ago, updated our downtown commercial zone to be a form-based code, and make it a little easier to do housing, and also providing some caps on the unit size, so you don't just get luxury townhomes throughout, so.
Except for that, that you guys don't even really want residential down there.
No, single family, if we want it as multifamily.
So you want multifamily.
So we have, we have, so just on the form-based code, there's two cross-sections. One, the, the core, which is commercial on the bottom, residential on top, and then the next zone, which could be pure multifamily.
Yeah.
Um, but we did put a cap on the unit size to try and encourage and require smaller units in the downtown core, in the downtown.
And that'll be another conversation when we update our housing element and our vanuze element, is do we look at some zoning? And are there ways to create additional zones or new zones that can accommodate more of that missing middle typology that, uh, allows for smaller unit sizes?
Or why not, I mean, I, I don't know if this is, I don't, not a part of your world, so I don't say stuff that you're going, where did she come up with that? But why not have developers have to have, like, kind of a little bit of a mixture? Why does it have to be all the same big homes? Why not say, okay, there's a certain percentage that needs to be, you know, duplexes or, or whatever? So that is a mixture, because one of the things that I think is, I'm very also curious about is how we're gonna update the public, or how we're gonna communicate this to the public and get them to buy into some of this? Because you guys can do everything you want, but, you know, there's a ton of people that are just so afraid of what all of this means, and they don't wanna see our, our views get, you know, covered, and, I mean, you guys are more aware than me of what people complain about, but we need to start really educating the public on what this means and why this is a good thing, instead of a scary, I mean, change is scary, but, you know.
I don't think you're gonna change anyone's mind, but change isn't scary.
Yeah, um, so, but I think that, you know, just having a plan of how we're going to get it out to the public and make them, you know, understand and buy in and be excited about this, instead of, you know, um, not being happy. Because I think if we had the public more excited about it, it would probably make things easier too. So, um, just curious about that, to be, being a real estate.
Yeah, so to answer a few of your questions, um, we did look into a medium density code that had required a variety of housing types, but didn't pass council. Um, that doesn't mean that, that might not be, need to come back up as part of this exercise and, and need. Um, one of the big things we ran into, though, with something like that, especially as a new development, is there's not a builder out there that does three or four different types of buildings. And so it becomes almost a dead project, because they have to try and sell it one lot, one lot, one lot, for someone who builds duplexes and triplexes. And so we ran into a lot of difficulty in trying to come up with those for, it's a lot easier if you rezone an area to allow for duplexes, then it happens naturally as infill, and you get different types naturally, because you don't just get a bunch of single families, single-family houses just turning over into other unit types, so you, it would be looking at, re, to get something that's more natural and more mixed, you'd be taking an existing single-family development and saying you can do up to triplexes in it. But again, then you run into the scary change of those people don't want that in, on their property, so.
Next door.
Next door or on their property, so it, it's hard. We wanna try and actually create a mix, and we get that a little bit with our downtown and creating the new process, um, but we, and we looked at trying to do it in, in like, some zones that had a lot of vacancies, and we ran into a lot of, like I said, a lot of difficulty. We, we think, we think we could still get it passed, but it might be a very long time to develop, to get a true nice mix in a community that isn't just a phase mix where the front is this type, the next one is that, and really have a integrated. It's hard to find a builder to build that naturally.
And I think we've had so much residential development, and thus now being built out, um, that there is that kind of resistance by the community of more.
Family coming.
Yeah.
Do we really need more?
Do we need more, you know, so, um, then all of this will help inform.
And in terms of how we're getting it out there, we are planning on doing a mailing to all of our property owners that we are in the process of cross-open updating our comp plan and asking them to get involved. We created a notify me on our website specific to our comp plan update, so that anytime we have these public meetings or hearings or discussions, we send out a special notice, uh, to their email to say, sign up. So we're gonna send out one big mass mailing and say, please sign up, and then we'll send out all the notices of everything going on through that, so that people can get involved and participate. This won't be our only open house through the whole process, or our only work-study, you know, kind of thing. There'll, there'll be multiple ones throughout the entire process.
And we can tell you that we do have dockets that have been received, um, that the planning commission looked at, and we have some property owners that are interested in, um, upzoning their property, to go from a low density to a higher use, um, so.
Also, to the, the communication factor of how do we address the scary versus the importance? Um, Blue Line's done a fantastic job with the storytelling component of this, with the housing needs assessment. So they've done interviews with teachers, with people at the grocery store, with a lot of local employees that don't necessarily live here, but might like to. And having those personal tales helps to tell the story of, it's not just them, it's not just people coming from elsewhere, it's us, and it's our needs as a community. And I think that's gonna be really valuable as we carry this through into the, the process.
What's the gap in the current acreage that we have that's arguably developable in term of now? So, in a, to say another way, to meet this, how many, how much area are we looking like likely has to be rezoned in some capacity?
We don't know. We, that's, that's gonna be a more detailed analysis. We know for our total growth number, which is one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight, we have enough capacity. We don't know, and that was developed under the understanding of our capacity when we went and got that number and, you know, and took it. But that was before we knew we had to then segment that number into income categories. And so we don't know, now that it's segmented into income categories, what we have to rezone and how much. And we don't even know our final number for those income categories, because those haven't been formally adopted. The commerce guidance is still technically draft guidance, and so we're still waiting on all that. We, we, we're a lot closer now than we were two months ago, um, where we had no guidance and no understanding how we were gonna have to implement that, but we still don't have that, that final number and that final analysis.
Yeah, uh, partly what I ask is because this is a little bit of a gray area of putting out a twenty-year housing plan while also focusing, like, you, you wanna developer come in and underwrite homes that are kind of pencil, but you also wanna commercially develop downtowns, there are more jobs, there is a higher demand, there's more of the restaurants, whatever we wanna develop, right? That there is a, sort of an ongoing demand to come here, that helps the developer come in and underwrite them.
No, I do, I do think we're gonna have trouble rezoning.
But you don't wanna rezonate.
I think we're gonna have trouble rezoning any industrial or commercial land to go strictly residential. I think we're gonna need to look at more taking low density, going a little higher, maybe taking some low density and expanding our downtown commercial, which allows commercial on the bottom, residential on top, maybe even taking some of our, um, in more industrial land and going to more of our neighborhood business, which allows businesses on the bottom and housing on top.
Makes these, both the housing, garden, barns.
Yes, um, so. Yes, so I agree. We want to make sure that the city's, not just for underwriting, but that the city's fiscally responsible. The city loses money on houses. So we need to balance our land uses to make sure we have both jobs for people to work and want to be here, but also sales tax to the fun services for those.
Like that's the biggest X factor in all of this is if you look at the annual budget, we're hitting, I think what we saw last week was like fifteen thousand dollars from tourism and hotels. And so like there's a gap from tourism that we could potentially capitalize on, but we don't have to zone commercial in order to assist those developers to capitalize on that,
Yep.
which is a huge revenue, potential revenue stream for us. And we're a little bit tail wagging the dog if we get it.
Correct, yeah. I don't think we're looking at trying to reduce our, our commercial zone. Council definitely has put priority on commercial too to try and keep us balanced with our recent boom in residential growth.
With respect, I think most people I've talked to in this community and other small communities, the question is, what do we do with all of these segments? So you have the missing middle, you start to shelter all of them. So how do we move from shelter to sustainable affordable housing, tangible housing? And that has to be more of the metrics. Use narrative. If you tell the stories with some sort of narrative, you start with the narrative and you keep simple graphic displays of what that means. And selling a whole question of attainable housing, the first thing you do is begin to say, I have a friend who attains a house in Medina, he wants that house right in the world. He's gonna get it. But when we moved here, my wife said, we're gonna have to commute a long ways to get to town. And I said, thirteen miles to go for you? But that metric is good, but the narrative is like, how's the bottom line? It's not about, it's not about, it's about capital, you know? It's also about sustainability and that. I can't be rude, but this is kind of the thing I should talk to people. I'm gonna get my brother that way to tell him, oh, he may think I'm not the old man, but it's more than what I'm doing.
This is for, yeah, back and forth.
Any other comments or?
Because we can jump into the presentation now if.
Yeah, if I could just ask, I was not here in the beginning, so maybe you guys just switch. So I'm Jennifer Kirk and I direct Reclaim, uh, Home Valley Children's Services. I, of course, am always interested in what the city is doing to attention these people living in poverty in our community. I know I've reported before, but in the last two years, we've seen thirty-two percent of our clients that have come to us from due to homelessness. So how are we sweeping them up? So these are baby boomers, these are our parents that are becoming homeless because they're priced out of their property taxes. They had a spouse who passed away and they can't afford this or themselves anymore. So they're entering homelessness for the very first time in their seventies. It's mind blowing. And how do we teach those people from falling into the abyss that is chronic homelessness? Because once people have been doing this for a decade, once they set into that hopelessness and that mindset, it is extremely difficult to get them back out. And also what we see is we serve our resident homeless. So we have multiple housing vouchers that came out through KCRHA this last year. Three of our clients lost their vouchers after numerous extensions because they, they could not and would not leave their own valley. This is where they have lived for generations and they will rather live homeless than to not actually get housed here, even trying to talk them into going to Isipah to get housed is nearly impossible. So I love to know, like, what is the city doing to make sure that you guys are taking care of your population that's living in poverty here?
And I have a question for you about the tax impact and are you seeing any relief by the county? Is there any resources out there if people are getting taxed out of their homes? Like you said, the boomer age and?
Not that, not that we've seen.
Wow, okay.
But that's also not our real health, is the deal with property tax.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Um, I can tell you that part of these numbers that we have to figure out include permanent supportive housing and, what's the other one?
Transitional.
Transitional housing. So that, it will be part of the housing element plan that we have to figure out that we are meeting that need with available.
Right, like this is a long-term plan.
We have to make sure that we are allowing it in enough places to meet our need. We are not building it because we're, we don't have, we're too small of a city to have a housing authority, but we will be making sure that on day one of the plan, that, that we have the code and the available room is what we're required to do, to have a compliant code, is make sure that we can plan and accommodate so that we've got, we've, we have a code. So right now, when the recent permanent supportive housing or, and transitional housing code came out, we wrote a code to try and be in compliance with the law that passed last year. But we now have numbers that we will have to go back and look at that code and see if we've allowed it in enough places to accommodate that. That does, I can tell you in the year that we passed it too and made it, you know, a conditional use permit, we haven't had to make requests to build anything, but.
We, we brought a request that never made it anywhere. So we connected the mayor to the county for their Help Through Housing initiative. Edwick is for sale, we were looking at that property, be able to, so the county could come in, purchase that property and we would manage that property, which is a great fit. I mean, I think if any agency is gonna manage it, it should be us. It would be NARO. Um, probably massive percentage of those people that would be housed, there would be people from the valley specifically. And then they were letting us choose the geographic area instead of just pulling from the coordinated entry system of anybody and everybody, right? That was one of the first questions we asked because we knew that was gonna come up and be a big concern here. And we were not even given permission to actually walk onto that property to actually look at it for purchase. So we, we had brought to the table and something that would provide forty-four units of permanent supportive housing nearly immediately. And we couldn't get it pushed to even having a meeting.
I'm sorry, we, we have no.
Yeah, no, we, so we, we actually have an email that we have with the mayor too. So I just, I just would like that, that just so that everybody is aware here that we were bringing to the table an auction for forty-four units of permanent supportive housing. And we were not able to kind of keep that further.
Is there, I'm, I'm curious if there was something, I mean, you're saying we didn't have a formal application that instead of going through the email, shouldn't she have maybe just done something different to bring that to someone?
So we were asked to just be a part of the meeting.
I'm wondering if the, we're, I think none of us are familiar with this. We'll have to look into it, but my guess might be that if the zoning didn't allow for it,
Yeah, it might have been.
that you had to be a rezone and then go through that whole process. So the certainty is, is unknown. But if you have a parcel you purchased that allows it and if it's in the zoning, you can make an application.
So that, that never, in any of the concerns that came up, that was never part of the conversation? This is the first that I'm hearing about that.
And how long ago was this? Because I know, I remember hearing about some of these stuff. Okay, because I do know that we were discussing somewhere where it might make sense. Edwick may not have made sense because that's, I think, our only little, we, until we get the new hotel, that's.
On the market, like, somebody's gonna buy that property.
Right.
And what do you mean by Edwick? Where do you mean?
The Edwick Inn.
The Edwick Inn, the hotel?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a fantastic location, in my opinion. We'd have to work with Amy over at FCT to have that more consistent situation out there.
And you guys utilize that, right?
We, we rent numerous rooms there every single day and have for almost three years now.
So the immediate barrier there that would need to be addressed is zoning. So right now, that's the interchange commercial zone, which is intended for freeway-oriented commercial and service use.
So I think that maybe that site would have been possible.
Do you guys have plans for Edwick or for that property in there?
Uh, no, our zoning is interchange.
Commercial.
Commercial, yeah.
Okay, because I've heard rumors that fire and rest, there's something, there's some big plan for that whole area out there that's gonna require the build out of the new hotel or something up there.
So there's, yeah, there's the potential Army Ready National Guard that's near there. It's not taking over any existing, it's on vacant land that's out there. Um, and the, the original plan with the National Guard was also it would have some additional parcels that would be future commercial that could trigger a need because of the National Guard family and them coming out, the hotels could be triggered. Right now, we only have the one hotel that's in process.
Okay, so who do we contact to talk about this? Can we contact?
Yeah, I would say, yeah. Contact me, that's fine, to talk about zoning.
Perfect.
And, and again, I think also with the new codes and the new requirements and the new planning, the codes may be required to be a little more flexible than they were before or that they are now. So it might be something that in a year, when it's adopted, there might be more flexibility to, to work within the code because we have a specific number we have to try and meet. And so again, I think that's gonna necessitate some of the barriers in our code to be reduced and it, that could be that that zone opens up, I don't know. Um, but as of right now, it's, you know, it's not.
Okay, I'll read it.
I think it's talking trees, I'm not co-conspirated with her.
Sure you are.
When we moved here, I made an effort to memorize the comp plan.
Oh, my gosh.
Where neighborhoods are, in the Wood River. And I tend to be an outdoors kind of a guy, the door to door, meet my neighbors. And I never raised the concept of attainable housing because obviously we can attain housing, but one of our neighbors said, they ought to have some neighborhood meetings where you don't wait for them to kind of come because they're afraid of City Hall. I mean, come here, come here, like, one of them. But a neighborhood conversation becomes the opportunity to, to do a directed coffee, tea and punch. And doing so, you say, just try to get a little chat chat about your city and your neighborhood. Because I didn't know this was gonna happen, that's true. But suddenly realize, whoa, this is industrial section, but the neighborhood is still viable as a close neighborhood in Tannawood. And I just think maybe a neighborhood conversation, say, we're setting ourselves out somewhere. Mayor does that in town and some of you that in town. You know, there, let, you go to them and that's gonna, that's gonna buy you this much credibility you might not have.
And if you try to do coffee, they, or you know.
Yeah, we do have coffee, coffee with the mayor.
It gets so hard to get people.
And, and we do, we do do.
And then we'll all freak out and go back home again.
And then we do some outreach, like we do some outreach to Quanis and Rotary and things like that, so.
Well, and even like the surprise option that you're doing.
Yes, yes, exactly.
I, I do like what he said, though. I think that instead of doing like a coffee shop type thing, and I know this would take ever some time and, you know, I'm not offering that time, so.
Well, why not?
I know. If like the council, you know, some of the city council members or the mayor would reach, you know, could like get in touch with neighborhood HOAs and have a meeting in the neighborhood, I think you'd get a ton more people than if you just held, held it at like a coffee shop. So we have, hey, we're gonna talk to this Tannerwood, Wood River, you know, all that area and then, you know, and, and so give the HOAs to get everyone together. Um, and then have it, I think that might be a great way.
Would you wanna see, would you think it would make sense that we would be targeted like comp plan update or just like a Q and A with the neighborhood?
I, I think we have to talk about insight. If you move towards a heavy duty agenda, people are gonna assume it's already a done deal. You're seeking insight and wisdom from those who are landowners, some who've been here for, some who've been saying, gosh.
Well, I, another outreach that, just so you guys know, not specific to any of this, is we are getting ready to send out a community-wide survey. It is a select sample, so not every property owner, but it will be mailed to like every fifth property owner or something like that, I don't know the exact number. But we are trying to get some insight generally on our services and our happy. And so this is the first time we've done it in thirty, forty years that we've done a survey. I think someone propped up an old survey that we did as a citywide survey. So the council is interested in people's comments and that, that city survey, I think, will be going out in the next month to people. So if you are on, here on the phone and you get it, please fill it out.
So I think with surveys, though, I mean, how many, how many residents do we have in North Bend?
I think we determined we have.
Nine thousand now.
About seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen people as of twenty twenty-two.
But there's about two thousand properties. So just, obviously, it's one per household that we're looking at response.
We had five hundred responses?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that's not too bad.
No, actually, statistically significant's only about three hundred for our size population. Two hundred to three hundred is an average for our size population. So we're already above that now. Because this was sent out, we don't know if people filled it out twice or this or that. So it's not a statistically significant survey like the other survey will be, making sure that there's no duplicates, it's going to different income levels and different areas of the city. Because we, this, for all we know, this survey could all be filled out by half of the city and not the whole, you know, geographically. But, so yeah, so there, there, we are trying to, through surveys and other ways, trying to get people who don't want to come into meetings to provide their opinion and get information. But I do like the idea of talking to the mayor about sending mayor and maybe me and another director out and doing just a Q and A. Like if you guys have questions.
And do like a, have times that you're gonna stop in certain places or something.
Set up a lemonade stand.
Right.
Lemonade stand.
Yeah.
I mean, we do do outreach through Block Party. We've had, when we were doing our park elements, we were out at the Farmer's Market. So we do try and get out to where people are going that's besides City Hall to get opinions. And we will continue to do that. I'm guessing for our comp plan, we'll have something at Block Party again, um, get people to sign up for notify me, get people to be there to ask questions and things like that.
Great, well, maybe we should have Caitlin give her presentation and that might spur some more discussion or questions. And Caitlin, I guess you can introduce yourself. And then would you, do you want people to stop and, or would you rather get through it and then have, have questions? If there's clarifying questions, maybe ask those if it's not too disruptive for her.
No.
And otherwise, um, we'll have more discussion after.
Yeah.
And are we able to display this?
Yeah, let me get that all set up.
Okay. I will share my screen. And nobody else is waiting, so I guess everybody's here that's coming.
All right.
All right, hi, everybody. My name is Caitlin Hepworth. I'm an associate planner with Blue Line, which is based out in Kirkland. And I've been working with Jamie and Rebecca on the Housing Action Plan. Um, and I'm going to take you through a slideshow that will cover a couple of different aspects of the housing needs assessment and how the overall project fits into the city's requirements to plan for housing at the state level, as well as what existing, what the existing conditions in the city are in terms of demographics and housing conditions. Um, let's get going. So this is an agenda for the presentation. So as I mentioned, we're gonna go into kind of the background of what a housing action plan and a housing needs assessment are, as well as where this project really came from. Then we're going to review some of the key high-level data points from the housing needs assessment. There's three main sections of that part of the presentation, which are community overview, which is demographics, housing conditions, and then the gap analysis, which really relates to our comprehensive plan and planning for housing for 2044. Then I will, then I will be outlining the next steps on the project and timing and then I'll open the floor up for some general questions that I have for everybody. I do encourage you to raise your hand if you have any questions about any of the slides that come up. You know, we have the time, we should utilize it as best as we can so that we're all on the same page and understand not only where this information is, is coming from, but why it's important for making policy and regulation considerations for housing in North Bend. So just some brief background information. Last year, the city applied for grant funding at the Washington State Department of Commerce, which is funded, this grant program was funded under House Bill nineteen twenty-three. And the primary purpose of that grant was specifically to allow the city to have funding to develop a housing action plan to recognize the city's existing and potential future needs for housing, as well as provide some ideas for goals, policies and strategies to meet those needs. Um, as Rebecca stated, the city did not actually build or manage housing itself, but it does impact what kinds of housing could be produced in the city through its comprehensive plan policies, development codes, incentive programs and capital projects. So the Housing Action Plan is the final deliverable, which will identify the strategies and recommendations that the city should consider or could consider in order to meet those housing require, or housing allocations and be housing goal that we are trying to plan capacity for in 2044. So this is a timeline showing the overall project and how they all relate to one another. So these are all separate tasks that are all funded by the same grant program. So the city is not spending any of its own funding on this project. Um, so the first part of the Housing Action Plan is conducting the housing needs assessment. This is included and is available on the city's website, I believe. Yes, great. So the housing needs assessment is the foundation of the Housing Action Plan. So the Housing Needs Assessment is the foundation of the Housing Action Plan as it's a collection of data. Um, as described, data is not the only thing that we are considering in terms of how we would wanna go about making recommendations. It only paints a partial picture of what the current conditions are and what the community is experiencing. Um, but it does guide some of the other parts of the project, like the Housing Action Plan, since we'll have a better understanding of what steps there are in terms of attainable and affordable housing for every economic segment of the community. Um, the second part of the Housing Action Plan process is the public participation phase. Um, so we're in that process right now. And we will be going through, I think, most likely May, probably realistically, to finish how the public engagement process. Um, but as previously mentioned, there are a slew of things that we are doing to engage the public. Uh, we have the community survey going on. We also have, um, interviews that are happening with, uh, the workforce community. Uh, then we are having, um, a number of meetings, both open house and presentations with planning commission and city council to get feedback, um, and solicit thoughts and, um, experiences from the community. And then finally, the last component of the Housing Action Plan process is the Housing Action Plan itself. So this is when we will be selecting the recommended strategies that we think will have the greatest potential impact to address the current and future housing needs. Uh, this also includes a plan for implementing those different recommendations. So what steps might need to be taken, what would the timeline be, and what would the cost investment roughly be? Um, those are just going to be high-level estimates. They're not gonna be specific numbers because we cannot account for changes of cost, inflation, consultants that are used, et cetera. Um, this will also include a, a monitoring plan to help the city track, um, how to determine whether specific recommendations are, um, successful or not. Uh, things like how many, um, permit applications are brought in, um, upon adoption of a certain tool that relates to, um, that form of housing. So for instance, a multifamily tax exemption, if adopted, we could track and see how many different permit applications are being generated after that is, um, implemented into the city's program. So ultimately, we are tracking for adoption of the Housing Action Plan by June twenty twenty three. So now I'm gonna break down a little bit what exactly is the Housing Needs Assessment? Because the Housing Needs Assessment is a very data-driven document and it can be a little convoluted how it fits into the Housing Action Plan. Uh, so at its core, it's just a study that identifies the current and future housing needs for every economic segment of the population. It's meant to serve as a baseline understanding of the data that explains current conditions of housing in North Bend. And it highlights what potential shortcomings or gaps are being experienced in the community right now in terms of who can afford to live here and what kind of housing is needed for the people that already live here or work here. So there's many questions that Housing Needs Assessment seeks to answer, which includes who lives here, um, and who works here? And what are their socioeconomic characteristics? What types of housing are currently available in the city? Uh, not in terms of vacancy, but in terms of supply and size. And affordability. Are there any groups of people that are not able to find housing that is safe, affordable and also meets their needs? So are there potentially areas of the city where lar- large, single-family homes are being developed that are only going to be occupied by two to three people at most? Is that appropriate? And do we have enough housing to serve smaller family needs or different kind of household needs? How much housing and what types of it, of housing are going to be needed now and in the future to meet those different socioeconomic and, um, household-type family needs? Um, and then finally, is there sufficient buildable land capacity available to accommodate growth and diversity of housing choices? So if you did get an opportunity to read the Housing Needs Assessment, some of these questions you might already have answers to. Um, but these questions also require us to pull data from multiple different data sources, uh, which are shown on the right on the screen. Um, so we use, um, a number of different housing sources recommend, housing data sources recommended by the Department of Commerce to help prepare this document. Um, largely, a lot of this data is coming from the census bureau, um, under the twenty twenty census data. Um, we understand that some of the information on the next few slides over the next twenty to thirty minutes are going to be a lot of information. And again, I wanna encourage everyone to raise their hand if they have any questions about what they're seeing on the screen or if you wanna dive into what that means to you or what your perspective of that data is. It all helps us paint the picture of how people are experiencing housing successes and, um, challenges.
Good question.
Yes.
The data sources, that protocol on the far right, is that, is there anything about those specific data sources that are sort of North Bend-centric? Or is that a pretty, um, typical protocol that you would use kind of a prop?
It's pretty typical. So the Department of Commerce has guidance documents on how to prepare a Housing Needs Assessment. Um, Commerce prepares documents like this to help planners, um, both private and public planners to understand what the expectations are and what the most credible data sources are so that there's some consistency between these documents, but also consistency in the quality of those documents.
I have a question. Um, are they, are the sources mostly government sources or are there any private groups?
There are some private groups. We do use Zillow Data, but largely, all of these other sources are considered public data and, um, yeah.
Are, are any sort of like appraisal groups talked to, you know, institutes that are doing?
No, and that's where it gets a little bit difficult and challenging because, um, there's only so many aspects of housing characteristics that we can really, um, attain data for reliably. Um, so, you know, the Housing Needs Assessment gets into who can afford to buy a home here? And what level of income do you need to buy the average, a median-priced home in the city? And, you know, we won't be able to really a hundred percent get that right, in a sense, because we don't have everybody's background information. We don't know how, have any idea about people's savings. We don't know how people finance their lives. So this is a, a fairly limited portrait of what the housing conditions and affordabilities are in the city.
Okay. I, I was just thinking that, you know, with the Yeah, appraisers are doing market analysis every day.
Mm-hmm.
So they're gonna have kind of, they're gonna have some insight about housing and, and, and the areas that they work in every day. So I think that might be a good source, too, to get some information from.
Yeah, and it's also important to know that a lot of the data that is collected for the Housing Needs Assessment strongly aligns with the data that needs to be incorporated into the comprehensive plan, which wouldn't include things like appraisal information. So in a way, the Housing Needs Assessment is supplementary informative information, um, that helps the city conduct their periodic update of the housing element of the comprehensive plan. So I wanted to take a moment to just describe how the Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Action Plan fit into the overall relationship, uh, with the Growth Management Act and the Comprehensive Plan. So as you can see on the screen, there's a very helpful graphic that describes, um, the order in which considerations need to be made at the city level and how it relates to, um, higher levels of regulation from other, um, bodies of the government. So. So at the top, we have the Growth Management Act. So this is something that is regulated and maintained by the state of Washington. Uh, and that regulates the fact that we have to plan for housing under the Comprehensive Plan. Um, recently, there's been some changes to the Growth Management Act that have triggered this requirement to plan for every socioeconomic level of the city. Um, beneath that, you have the, um, uh, countywide and regional count, sorry, the multi-county-wide regulatory and, um, planning policies. So, you know, the state regulates the fact that we need to conduct a comprehensive plan, uh, every ten years after this next, uh, update. And then after that, um, there are considerations for policies that come from, uh, two different entities that impact North Bend. So, um, North Bend is located in King County, but it is also located in a multi-county, uh, how would you describe it?
Regional council?
Yeah, it's a regional council, more or less. So it's a group of counties that are in the Puget Sound area. It's called, the organization is called the Puget Sound Regional Council. And the intent of that organization is to plan for growth and change on a regional level. Um, you know, it's something you might realize, looking at a lot of this housing data, is that the city is only going to be able to do so much to plan for so much growth. Um, the most impact in terms of managing and planning for growth really happens more on a county or regional level. Um, so we have the Puget Sound Regional Council and King County separately providing, um, policies that we will need to incorporate into our housing element policies. That in turn impacts how the city plans for housing because we need to fulfill a degree of, uh, implementation of those policies. Um, and then we have the local Comprehensive Plan, which will be, um, informed both by the regional, county-wide and Housing Action Plan regulatory documents. Sorry, not regulatory documents, uh, policy documents. It should be noted that the Housing Action Plan only has recommendations for policies and is no way enforceable. Uh, they are only things that we are seeing in terms of data and public engagement that, um, we recommend the city to consider to help meet those potential needs.
Is there anything, although, so obviously Growth Management Act is enforceable by the state, but are the other two interior servants have equal enforcement levels? Or is there funding tied to those?
Yeah, so our comp plan have to be certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council for consistency with this.
So our policies have to align with the state-level requirements, PSRC and King County county-wide policies.
Who, who is, just to be clear, is requiring this? Is it all of those or is it the regional one or is it the Growth Management Act?
All of them. The state has the, like, the state has one overall requirement. Some stuff from the state, like the housing targets are passed down to the county and then the county distributes some to the city. So the county has county-wide planning policies, PSRC has their policies that we have to abide by, and the state has the laws that we have to abide by.
To go down a fact, yes, yeah, of abiding by.
That's a law to consider when we're developing these policies for the Comprehensive Plan.
When you talk about grant availability, if we don't?
So if we have it, so there's, the law says we have to have a comprehensive plan, but technically, there's not, um, any, the, the city doesn't get dissolved if we don't have a compliant Comprehensive Plan. What happens is we lose our funding. We won't, we won't get transportation funding, we can't apply for grants. If we don't have a certified and compliant comp plan, we, we lose all of our, our transportation funds.
That's what I was asking you, is, I guess, to say another way, could we have a comp plan that's compliant with the Growth, Growth Management Act? But maybe not compliant with the regional that we disagree with?
But then we won't get any funds, it won't matter if we're, yeah.
So the funds can't bypass the regional?
It has to go through all of them, yeah.
But there's, uh, flexibility in, in language, you know, it's the intent. And, and the point is that they have kind of the overarching goals and policies and then we can, not everybody's comp plan was the same.
Right, right, so the regional council, whether it's you or, or the mayor, somebody's in there, you know, I guess, for lack of a word, are freely negotiating how we're gonna solve this.
Right, or it's just more up at this level and then we're down at this level.
We, we, we do it and then we send it to them and they tell us that they feel there's something and then we work with them to try and get it.
Yeah. I'd like to take that a little further. The, the question I have is more about, uh, can you have a comp plan that is, uh, approved by GMA, not approved by regional, but still and access to grants, and there's states that are grants, not people's grants?
So the Puget Sound Regional Council is responsible for, for certifying that we are consistent and we have met the requirements. They're in charge of that, just fine.
Yep, yeah.
So some of it depends on the grant.
Yeah, okay.
Parks grants, PSRC doesn't really have much to do with that. So as long as our parks element's been certified by the state recreation and conservation office and the Growth Management Act, I don't think
Then we, we get those grants.
Sure.
But the, the big dollars are in the transportation and we have, usually have to have PSRC to get the grants. Federal, we may not. But we're, we're a small city, we probably aren't as competitive on a federal level as we are on a state level.
Right, I think that, I, the crossing, my question is more about whether or not there's a level of us overachieving to something that we don't have to do.
Yeah, not really.
Not really, right.
Not really, and we, we keep a track of that and I think through all of our different meetings, yeah.
I saw a question in the back.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you guys, I know everybody has to do their independent assessments, but do you guys work really closely with Snoqualmie?
So besides this, this is, this actually is the second assessment. We already did and worked with on a Snoqualmie Valley regional assessment to work together, so, yes. We do work with them, not just on, we have to do our own assessment to, as part of the rules for our comp plan. But we agree that we think it's more of a regional concern and we plan and are continuing to plan to work on a regional level.
And just to clarify that, regional housing needs assessment is also available on the city's website. It includes North Bend, Snoqualmie, Carnation and Duval.
Is the idea that, I guess, for the PSRC, that it's like distributed, that requirement is distributed equitably through the counties that are involved?
What's the idea?
The housing targets?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, the idea behind that is nobody's very interested to take growth.
Right.
But unless everybody takes their fair share, we're gonna have a housing crisis.
So that's like, that's the interesting one, wasn't it?
You just missed that presentation.
Yeah, so the county gets, the county gets a number, um, and then it gets broken up. It, it's interesting because there's three categories, correct? You've got the very large cities, and you have the medium, and then you have the small towns. And so there's six, the, the, the equation they use to assign them across the cities differs based on those three categories. So it's not just, uh, this is your population, you get this, you're that population of the county, you get this percentage. They do look at it through also the buildable land reports, how much land is available in a city versus a built-out city, um, and things like that. So there's, there's a lot of background stuff.
It's dynamic stuff.
It is dynamic.
Going back to whether there are commercial jobs.
Yes, yes, there's
Transit.
Yes, there's, so yes, transit is a calculating factor on those percentage of numbers. Higher, the higher capacity transit gets higher units. Uh, so yes, there is a dynamic, but it's also county by county on how that is distributed, too. So that, that was King County's process. That doesn't mean that every county has the exact same. State doesn't necessarily directly enforce how the county distributes it above the city. That becomes the county's responsibility to come up with the process to distribute it.
Well, you don't weigh it in the other city.
I'm curious why is fall city not considered?
It is not a city.
Because of that?
They're in King County. They get a sa- they get assigned through the King County unincorporated areas, the numbers.
So the county at that point would be responsible for planning capacity and distribution of those, um, housing targets in the unincorporated areas only.
And they do that through sub-area planning and I don't know how far our, does our go within a fall city? But just, is that for public comment right now?
Yeah.
So there's sub-area plan right now for this area, uh, out for public comment right now at the county level. So anyone interested in the unincorporated areas could review their document and comment.
Who's ready for data?
Yay, data.
Um, all right, so as I mentioned, there are three, um, names, data-driven sections of the Housing Needs Assessment that I'm gonna review kind of the high-level, um, takeaways and data points from. Um, so the first component of that is the community overview, which reviews information such as population, income, households, potential for displacement and jobs. So the overall population in North Bend has increased over the past twenty years, as demonstrated on the chart shown above. In twenty twenty-two, the population was seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen people, which is a thirteen percent increase since twenty nineteen and a sixty-seven percent increase since the year two thousand. Um, the annual population growth rate since two thousand and ten has been about three point four or five percent a year, which outpaces, um, King County's, uh, growth rate of two point three nine percent. So, um, oh. Um, not shown on the screen, but in the Housing Needs Assessment is some information about age, um, and age distribution among, um, residents in North Bend, King County, and also divided between men and women. So the Housing Needs Assessment for North Bend shows that the median age, uh, as of twenty twenty is thirty-nine, which is very similar to King County's median age of thirty-seven. Approximately forty-one percent of the population is between the ages of twenty and forty-nine. Um, and a quarter of the population is below the age of twenty. Fourteen percent of the population is over the age of sixty-five. However, that has also been steadily increasing over the last five years. In terms of diversity, North Bend is, uh, less racially and ethnically diverse than the population of King County. Um, just under three-quarters of the population is white, nineteen percent is Hispanic, um, with the remaining breakdowns of five percent two or more races, four percent Asian alone, and one percent African American. North Bend has a higher proportion of Latino residents than the county at large. So on the next slide, we're gonna talk about income distribution. So as shown above, this shows the different kinds of, uh, income levels between, um, King County and North Bend households. Um, and I just wanna explain the three different categories very briefly. So all households is quite literally every single household in the city. Um, so the average, um, income for the city overall is a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Then there are two other categories on the screen. There are families and non-families. So non-families are considered to be, uh, non-related persons that live in the same household versus families are, uh, related by, um, birth, marriage, and such. So, um, so the North Bend median family income household for the overall city is about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, which is twenty percent higher than King County's median income of ninety-nine thousand dollars. So a non-family household, as you can see on the screen, earns significantly less. It's sixty-four thousand dollars versus a family household of a hundred and twenty-three thou, oh, almost a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That is nearly an eighty thousand dollar difference between those two different kinds of, um, household types. So.
That's different.
In King County.
I think in County more is non-family.
Oh, sh, yeah, sorry.
That was King County.
Yeah, County. I think that needs to be switched. Interesting, okay.
We can follow up too?
Yeah, I'm, I just read the housing needs assessment before coming in and I'm pretty sure that those bars.
I'm gonna check that document?
Yeah, we'll double check that really quickly.
Yeah, I'll check that while you're, okay.
Thank you.
So you're just saying you need the dark blue?
I think that the dark blue and the light blue are switched, actually. I, I did just look at it.
It's been with the February seventh draft.
Oh, that hurt? Oh, okay.
Can you explain again what a non-family is? Just, I'm trying to figure out because that's an awful time.
Two individuals living together that are not married.
That are married, okay.
Or related by birth.
People, yeah. Then, then they have to be not married. If they're families, they're married.
Yes, family is married or, I mean, or by birth, yes. What's that?
We have common law, you know, they go Washington, so it might be hard to see. Yeah, I'm very interested.
I, I don't even know if the census data actually takes into common law marriages, it'd still be two individuals. Even if the state considers them married, it wouldn't be technically, so I, it would still.
That's true.
I'll check that.
Census.
I mean, usually it's, it's more looking like, I don't know, yeah.
Five-year period, they're probably, they're not married.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably dual income, uh.
What we're showing in the report is this, so we're gonna assume this is correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Same number?
I don't know.
So it's correct.
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. Um, so. So just talking about income while we're on the topic. So the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development uses, um, an area-wide median family income or AMI as an abbreviation to distribute households into five different income categories, which we, um, plan housing for, but also determines who can be eligible for subsidized housing and vouchers. Uh, so those five income categories are extremely low income, very low income, low income, moderate income, and above median income. Um, and those are all relative to what the median income is for the city. So the person that earns the lowest income versus the person that has the highest income, what's in the debt center? And that determines how, um, how eligible you are for subsidies or, um, what would be considered affordable to you.
This is based on earned income?
This is based on annual income.
Annual earned income?
Yeah.
National wage?
It could be self-protection.
Yeah, it could be more than one.
It could be more than employment.
Yeah, it is considered earned income.
That's a good question and I would want to look and see how the census records that information and whether that's a factor because ultimately this is data that's coming from the census, so it's reported earnings from the public.
And I think it also takes consideration child support, so any income source for somebody, whether it's employment or not, consistent income source.
I'm still trying to figure if a single billionaire throwing.
Yeah.
I find it a pain, that's all I know.
It's one person.
It's more than one.
It has to be more than one person. That's why the average is lower than the other two because it has to be at least two people in the family and non-family.
Okay.
And then anyone living by themselves, yeah, if two bullioners are living together, then they throw that up, yeah.
Based on just one person, you're in two.
Yeah, the, the average would have to be higher if it counted individuals. But these are group, these are non-family and family, two or more people living together.
And I'm just writing down some follow-up questions for, um, a follow-up email we can send out later this week, just answering some of the questions brought up today.
Yeah, because the all households will incorporate single, um, households, the other ones.
Yeah, that would make sense because then your higher or keeps that.
Yeah, that's how the average is pulled down is because somewhere in the bottom here are individuals.
Your high earners are getting it actually close to the family, closer than you would maybe think.
Alright, so much of the data in the housing needs assessment refers to households as opposed to individuals. So, uh, as we just discussed, a household is a group of people living in a housing unit, related or not. Uh, so that could be family or non-family household. Um, it can also only be one person if they are living alone in a housing unit. So that would be considered a family household as an individual.
So they would fall under the family category on the previous one?
If they are an individual.
Then, I don't see how our total can be lower than the other two to incorporate all, all possible outcomes. Have to be in between. You see what I'm saying? So if you say, if, if you say all households are both family and non-family and they're averaged together, they can't be this much lower than the other two higher numbers. So I think it has to not include in, in the income screen, individuals.
Well, all households could have all three, right? Could have family, non-family, and individual.
No, but she's saying individuals fall under, under non-family or family in this screen.
Oh, I, I hear.
So that's why I'm saying that doesn't make sense. In this case, it might make sense in renter and owner, but it, it can't.
Oh, because that's how I read it. I read that, uh, individuals were.
Aren't showing on here, right.
Right, they're, they're separate category.
There are separate category not shown on here because that would pull the average of all households.
Oh, no, I actually thought they were built into all households.
Yes.
Mm, yes. All households is three bars put together.
Exactly, exactly.
We're only seeing two of those bars separately.
That's how I read that.
All households are. We're not seeing the individual.
Zero.
Family, we're only seeing multi-people living with a family.
With the two bars, but, but we're saying the definition coming out of the census is that an individual would fall under a non-family or a family, living by themselves?
I think that's the question that could be defined.
Yeah. Because I, I, yeah. Otherwise it would have to be in between those two numbers if they, if they were incorporated somewhere in these other two.
Cost burden. Yeah, cost burden. Um, so another aspect in terms of affordability is measuring if households are cost burdens or not. So, um, when a household is considered cost burdened, it means that, um, the unit, the household unit spends thirty percent or more of the household income on housing costs alone. Um, this matters because this is also how the HUD defines whether or not a housing unit is affordable to you or not. If you ever rented a household in recent times, you may have been asked for information about your income and if you earn, um, less, or if you own, don't earn enough to be able to afford rent at thirty percent or lower, usually you have a much harder time attaining that unit, that development.
What is, what is the HUD's definition on housing costs? Is it just rent or just mortgage?
No. It's typically inclusive of multiple costs and it's a bit more complex when it comes to owned homes versus rented homes because there are more costs associated with, um, owned homes over rentals.
Right, like property insurance and property tax and all that, so.
Yeah, that's all included, but we're saying, but some property owners would sometimes just take the straight thirty percent towards rent so that they know that, but that doesn't mean that that person still would be considered cost burdened because then they still have to pay for their utilities.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, no, household cost is more than just mortgage payment, rent. It includes household cost.
Um, so shown on the screen, uh, you can see a graph that shows the proportional cost burden between all households and then a breakdown of specifically renters or owner, homeowners. Uh, severely cost burden means that a household is spending more than fifty percent of their annual income on housing costs. So renters tend to be, um, more cost burdened than homeowners. Um, but they also represent a much smaller sector of the community and tend to serve more lower-income needs than owned homes do. That's not true across the board, but that tends to be the general trend of who is living in higher-density forms of development.
That is a wild graph to me. I think.
It is, yeah.
I would have, I, well, I think.
You didn't expect it or just?
I, I think caused, I think a lot of America is cost burden compared to that.
Mm-hmm.
Who owns?
Oh, in comparison, you think we were low cost burdened?
And I think there's a lot more people that own homes.
With having over thirty percent of renters.
I think there's a lot more people that own homes that are severe, that are cost burdened to borderline severely cost burden because of lending practices and whatnot, right?
Right.
Yeah, and we, we do that more when you factor in transportation. I think it shows like al- almost everyone in North Bend is cost burdened.
Yeah.
No matter your income, no matter what, when you factor in transportation, so that, that information's there too.
Interesting.
You gotta read that whole report. That's fast as two.
Right.
Mm-hmm. It's going up and, yep.
Well, especially in Puget Sound, you got tons of people that are compensated with large stock investments, right? And like the markets go super volatile, so their income drops down thirty percent from what they were expecting or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and now they're, you know, maybe they, maybe they have, there's more elasticity in their finances so they, they find ways to kind of cover it, but they would fall under that, you know, based on that.
Well, and if, I can speak to a different perspective too, like, for instance, if I was to buy a house now, I would be cost burdened.
Yeah.
But I've been here long enough with the housing market, wasn't like it is now, that I'm not cost burdened based on what the house I bought. Right, so, and I think that's a, that's kind of common in North Bend too.
Mm-hmm.
I have.
There's fewer people are.
Newer people are gonna be cost burdened, but the people that have been here long enough got a house at, at a much lower rate that doesn't, keeps us out of that list.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Although Washington is, is pretty wild with property taxes too.
Right.
Because you can quickly become cost burdened if you live there for long, depending on your, you know.
The other interesting thing I've seen through working on all this is that, um, people are, maybe like the gentleman that was here, uh, moving from Medina, people are choosing to, um, li, to, to move and live in areas, um, and buying houses that they can afford. Um, and I guess, what's a better way to word it? They're buying, they're, um, underbuying. They could afford a lot more, but they're buying those homes outright, a lot of times with cash. So that skews everything too.
Yeah.
And then the expensive house they left is now on the market.
And then you have people that are trying to get into the market.
Right.
Who are struggling big time and so they, you know, they get friends, family or whatever to give them some money for the down payment and.
Mm-hmm.
And then they just skate them by, yeah, and then they get roommates and, yeah.
But you have a lot of people, like the people I was referring to too, you have a lot of people who enter into markets, specifically North Bend, for, because priorities outweigh.
Mm-hmm.
Being in a cost burden, like people want to be in the school district, right? They want, they want outside, they want off-stead, and they want.
They'd rather be cost burdened.
So they would rather kind of go all-in on the house, you know, and they're using up heavy schools and like kind of figure it out over the long.
Yeah.
But anyway, according to this now, because they would be like right in the neck of, you know, the burden to severely.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
So, um, overall, the North Bend has, uh, one-third, one-third of the community are renters and two-thirds are homeowners. Um, the city has a vacancy rate as of 2020 of a hundred and twenty-eight units, which is about four percent of the housing supply as of 2020. So when vacancy rates go below five percent, it causes, um, the housing market to be extremely high demand. It's considered high demand in the area and puts a huge upward pressure on housing prices, which can lock people out of the community entirely. Um, so the city's vacancy rate is considered at risk at this time with a moderate to high demand for housing. So as you can see on the screen as well, about thirty percent of renters are considered cost burdened in some degree with a nineteen percent to be considered extremely cost burdened or spending more than fifty percent of their income on housing. Um, when it comes to homeownership, uh, we see about sixteen percent are considered cost burdened with seven percent severely cost burdened.
When was this data taken? In 2020?
Twenty twenty, during the 2020 census.
Okay, so it's old.
It's a little bit older unfortunately and it would, I, I'm, I'm guessing that has really dramatically changed a bit since the pandemic happened, um, and the recent, you know, pressure on the housing crisis and housing supply chain. So as you mentioned, it's likely that even more cost burdens are being experienced as of now than is shown on the screen.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So.
We know, we already talked about like layoffs and.
Yeah.
Where, that, that being a lasting part of that. Big time too.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a snapshot in time.
There's also, um, several like bills being put in the Senate right now, Washington State, in which they're trying to, they're trying to re- resolve the problem with tenants not being able to rent. And, um, frankly, I think they're going about it the wrong way. What they're trying to do is they're trying to punish people that own properties. People that own properties don't want to cap the amount of rent they can do, but those people that own properties, their property taxes still go up. So what's gonna happen is they're not gonna be able to afford renting out their property because the, the rent's not gonna be enough to cover a lot of their expenses because you don't have this property taxes, you also have insurance and you have maintenance costs. So if the state's gonna start basically punishing the small homeowners that are renting out, you're gonna reduce the amount of rentals you have available. You're gonna have, the, the price of rents are gonna go up even higher again.
Right.
Because supply and demand, you're not gonna have enough product.
I'm not gonna be taking on a local, because I, you mentioned, which I didn't notice, but at the beginning of the meeting you mentioned we have a code, um, for ADUs that requires that you can be an owner if you occupy, so I would be super in favor of admitting that code. But to your point, and even if we try to help our supply with some local owners who want to turn a granny unit or something into it, it's gonna be tough to pencil.
Right.
Because they're not gonna be bought by developer, they're gonna say, okay, if they can supplement the income or, or.
Talking about ADUs, ADUs are very hard. They're, they are cheap to develop, but they, they aren't financed the same way a primary unit is financed. So it's harder for people to get the money. They have to either have enough equity to refinance to, to build it if they want to build it into their mortgage or they have to have a line, a enough line of credit to do it. So it's very hard. Um, I came from a different state that put a lot of ADU regulations in that are similar to what Washington is doing now and we still didn't see a boom in ADUs because it is, although it's a great way to do it, they're not developers developing them, uh, from the get-go. So it's homeowners have to figure out how to fund a project and that's still very hard as a second dwelling unit.
Sorry, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. The, what you said earlier with ADUs.
Mm-hmm.
Our code currently makes, requires that all the property.
Someone, yeah.
You own it and, so that you don't have to be the one that's in the ADU.
Not in the ADU, you have to be, you have, you can be in the ADU or you can be in the primary unit. But you can't just buy, you, you can't just buy a property, build an ADU and rent those units.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
You have to live on, onsite somewhere.
I got you.
But we say that, but again, we have no enforcement and there's no knowledge, people do it, so.
Yeah, I think that's, I think, I would assume that if you're. I would assume that if you're.
But that's, but that's an ADU law that's been discussed and gonna probably be overridden soon.
That's a good assumption. I mean, the ADU arguably only makes sense if you're there anyways.
Right.
Unless you're, you know, investor, you're doing that over number, but.
Yeah.
I guess the point to think about is, do you care? Like, if we're getting more units and if that's the point, then do we care if the owner's there?
My renter might still need a place for their parents just because.
Right.
Yeah.
They're a renter, doesn't mean that they, that that unit can't be used and keep someone off the street and putting somebody there.
There's probably a need for the property rights though, like, cause, you know, people during pandemic left and who knows if you have a house in North Bend and maybe you live in Idaho, if you don't need to sell your property, now you have another rental. And there's some, there's some.
And some cities allow two ADUs on a lot, so that's something to think about too.
That might go.
If, if you have a larger lot, but we keep diverting here.
No, that's the point. This is meant to be an open house, an open discussion. Um, just a little sidebar, but we're working on the Shoreline Cottage Code and we are allowing ADUs to be on cottage developments.
Oh, okay.
Uh, a limited number, but, uh.
Like above garages mostly, would you see that or?
What?
Above garages or where would they fit them in? Just on the lot?
Yeah.
Yeah. Other, anywhere lots are big enough on.
Yeah.
You know, then the, within the property line, there's no way to do it.
Would you consider it above the garage an ADU?
Mm-hmm.
I always think of ADUs as separate buildings.
And it can be attached as well. We allow it.
It's, yeah, there is attached ADUs.
A lot cheaper to go above.
Oh, of course, yeah. Call that, and above the garage.
Technically, our form-based code.
Term for like a carriage unit, but it's.
Still an ADU.
Sure, sure.
Everywhere else.
Separate means of entry, cooking facility are kind of the, now with air fryers and all that.
Anything is possible.
Anything is possible.
Um, alright, so on the next slide, we're gonna just take a quick look at displacement. Again, this map is gonna be from twenty twenty, so, um, take it with a grain of salt. Uh, but that displacement map is going to show, um, what happens when neighborhood conditions change and force residents to move, creating additional pressures that may impact local job growth and development and housing distribution. So according to PSRC and its mapping data, North Bend is considered a low-risk area for displacement as of twenty twenty. Uh, but this also indicates that North Bend scored lower than half of all other cities in Pierce, Nahomish, Hittap and King Counties in the following five, uh, indicator categories that they use to determine, um, who is at the most risk of displacement in this map. Um, that includes socio-demographic data, transportation quality, neighborhood characteristics, housing availability and supply and civic engagement. So policies that support racially and economically diverse communities help ease socioeconomic strains on residents that would otherwise result in displacement. Um, so now we're gonna take a look at the workforce profile for the city.
Those are the counties and PSRC, by the way.
This is PSRC information.
So for displacement, what does that mean? They have to leave to work or what is it?
No, displacement means that you're.
They can't afford to live here.
You, yeah, you're, you, you.
Forced out.
You have to, you're forced out of your home for one reason or another.
And we're at low risk?
Yes, comparatively.
Like you lost your job or, yeah, your expenses became too much.
Just comparatively to Seattle or whatever.
Right. Comparatively in the region, we're at a low risk. Big meaning, if people get here, uh, they're able to stay easier than other areas.
And I can include a link to this displacement map and the interactive guide that goes along with it after this meeting to help process what this is really getting at, uh, and how this was determined.
That doesn't make any sense when we're saying that so many people can't afford to live here.
But once they're here.
But so once they're here.
Yeah, yeah. You're not qualified if you don't live here, or you can't be included into that.
Yeah. It's, it's if you live here and then now you.
You can't live here any longer.
Yeah, so.
All the baby goomer, so if you give this another ten or fifteen years, then it's gonna be a much different.
Yeah, I'm sure like Kirkland or Bellevue is a much higher risk.
This is kind of, you know, hopeful looking, but I think it's, gotta remember it's not reality of what's gonna be here in.
I think our children, our, my children will be displaced, but they won't be able to live in this area unless they're intact, you know? Yeah, so, yeah.
I, I grew up in Issaquah, Washington, so I'm almost your neighbor. Um, and after college, I had to live with my mother because there was no options for me to reasonably afford, um, an independent unit on my own and paying any, you know, uh, uh, loans that I had for college, um, and live in the area that I was working as well, um.
And you're a white collar professional, so.
What?
Oh, you're a college educated, white collar professional.
Yes, I am.
Compare that again.
Yeah, and I experienced that difficulty for three years after college before I was able to save enough to comfortably be able to afford my own one-bedroom apartment in Kent.
In Kent. Yeah, there you go, yep.
We moved up here in, uh, about eighteen months ago, almost, yeah, going twenty years. I lived in Marin County in the Bay Area my entire life.
Yeah.
The median age, I think you said median age in North Bend was thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, the median age in Marin is forty-nine and a half. And I lived there, um, always thirty-eight, so almost thirty-seven years. And it just went up that median age for that exact reason. Even with property tax in California, which is, I don't think property tax is a state law. And it was effectively.
Not much difference in here.
Oh, even with the cabinet.
Right, because they're bonded inside the property. But same thing is like over time, like I, we had a file, we were, we were in Marin, but everyone else left. I mean, we were in knowledge that we stayed there. Um, we ended up leaving from here, um, but yeah, I mean, I see a lot of that similarity to what you were saying.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, my situation's a little bit different. When I moved up here, I definitely went from a much lower cost of living area to a much higher cost of living area. Um, I ended up in Issaquah, but I couldn't even buy here, but that was due to lack of availability and not cost. You know, I, I could have bought a new home, but I would have been waiting six months for that home to finish and I had started this job. So I couldn't wait, so I ended up in a surrounding community, even though my first initial thought was to buy in this community. But due to lack of availability of houses on the market, both already built and new houses coming on the line, I couldn't get a house in here. I put in multiple offers and got over a hundred thousand dollars cash offer above my offer, you know, on them. And even when I offered over sixty thousand asking, I still didn't get the house. So, you know, we ended up in a surrounding community, um, and not due, due to lack of, of, there's just lack of availability.
I still thought the factors there too.
Yeah.
Um, so we talked about income earlier, so I just want to do a brief description of the employment at the city by industry for residents. So jobs are primarily held in services, retailing, construction or resources. Uh, the city has a greater number of jobs than homes with a jobs to housing ratio of one point one seven.
Need more jobs.
One point one seven is a really good.
Sure, the problem is the.
High-paying jobs, high-paying house, you know, low-paying jobs, high-paying housing, high-cost housing.
Well, yeah, because the people that are working the service industry can't afford to live here.
Right.
Well, and we're not building things that they can af- afford. I mean, we're doing apartments now, which is great, I'm thrilled about them and not everybody is, but I think that's great. But we're building bigger homes, so I mean, that's just the simple truth of the matter. But these dogs figure out how developers can afford to build small.
I ju- I just think a community is so much healthier when people can live and work if, if they choose.
If they choose.
We're assuming, I mean, I'm on the task force, the.
Yeah.
And you're, you're coming on, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and we talk about that a lot. I mean, we're assuming that people want to live and work in their own community, but I think it's safe to assume that many of us do want to do that, right? And we are just such, I mean, that's kind of what makes us so unique out here in the Valley is that we are so tight-knit and when something falls apart, we all come together and it makes us really beautiful. Um, and we lose a lot of that when people work here and they invest their time away from their families and they have to leave the community to go home.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, there, obviously you want to make sure everyone has the opportunity or not everybody does. Some people, you know, wanna separate, but that also, if they have a family, creates more time commuting and less time with their family when they live.
I'll say, like, I think you, you guys, the, and I've talked to David Miller and Bonish and the mayor, and I think you, you take the council and, and city administrator, you guys are taking the right approach with the focus on commercial. Because I'm, I'm a developer for eighteen years and like, it, it comes down to the underwriting really. And when you see, I've seen other reports about, you know, the amount of money that's being spent out, where people leave North Bend and spend it, right? And those are the kind of things that we're gonna look at if we're a developer on the underwriting. So it's like, is the demand there for me to go multifamily? And if you have more, more jobs that are, um, you know, quality, quality jobs, just, just more, more jobs that are concentrated in that area, it's gonna be a lot easier for somebody to come in and say, okay, let's, let's go build a fifty-unit mid-rise or something like that. But when you, it's tough now and you see those numbers about everyone leaving to go to their shopping in Issaquah or to, to go work in Bellevue or where they're going. It's like, if I build these homes, what's my time horizon? How, how long until I get leased up or sold? It's tougher, which is likely why they think, well, I don't know. Cause it was easier to say, well, we got a tech worker, he's gonna work remote and they're definitely gonna want to buy this house near, you know, some wall back. And so that's my, I mean, that's my guess, it's just like when you underwrite, it's, it would be hard for me to come in with a team and underwrite multifamily based on the current job, right? Like, um, there's a lot that you would love about it, you know, proximity outdoors, like all those ticks and boxes of, you could make something really attractive, but how long are you gonna take to get people to lease those up? That's, that's the tough part. So I think the city's on the right path by focusing on the commercial first, because I think that's the gateway to flow to once this housing plan's in place. I think the developers come once the jobs come at a little bit more, but my opinion.
That's a whole other public, getting the public to sign that.
Yeah.
But nobody wants, you know, any of that. They don't want the big employers, you know, companies to come in, I mean.
Yeah, we're not, not on big box here basically.
Yeah, so.
That doesn't mean non-high-tech or non.
Yeah, and, and yeah, you're, you're definitely, you don't need the Costco little world to show up in, in North Bend, nobody would want that. But, I mean, there's, you can get regional.
I'll take their corporate office.
Yeah, but it's, it's probably regional and then, and even coming down to, you know, smaller independent companies that are the twenty to fifty employees, point of sale. First of all, we need the sales tax for it to be self-sustaining at any level, right? So, cause like you said, no matter how many homes or apartments you build, I mean, it's a pain in the dollar, what is it you can get out of that?
Well, I think the unspoken part too that we haven't talked about yet is there is a pretty vocal group in the city that, yeah, doesn't want more people here.
Yeah.
And they'll, they'll freely tell you that they don't want more people here.
Mm-hmm.
And so, whether or not it's the majority or that they should listen to, it's different, but, uh, there is a, a group, large group that care to, to make sure that it's, we keep it small.
That's why those stories are so important.
You've gotta get the public behind it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of new people here and they feel differently than the original vocal group. You know, we do have a lot of new residents.
It also speaks.
Your neighbors to come out.
Yeah.
Probably harder to kind of reel in what that actually looks like, right? If you're looking at social media, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It comes from.
Social, yeah, you kind of drown out.
Drown out, yeah.
It really speaks to.
As always.
My entire career planning is the vocal minority, you know, whether they shout out the, the majority of what people want.
Mm-hmm.
It really speaks to the importance of who we're reaching also. Or like, there was discussion about the HOAs, which is great, but the HOA does represent a single-family, probably more wealthy community. So how are we also reaching to the apartment communities and to people that wouldn't normally participate?
The association, I mean, you can reach out to that person too and have a meeting at the apartment complex. You know, they all, we all, all, all the communities most have associations, but you can reach out to that one person and organize meetings.
Or the chamber too, right? Their employees, right? Like, how are they hiring? How difficult is it for them to lose an employee to rehire? Because somebody didn't want to travel over the past or.
That's what we talked about in the task force, how difficult it would be to do a survey with all the employers here.
Mm-hmm.
To be able to survey their own staff members, how many of their employees would want to live in the same area where they're working.
I need to cover certain cities, I've hired snow folk, I mean, I know I've talked.
That's why we tried to get this housing survey out.
Yeah, we did too, uh, all, like, all, almost all the businesses in town.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Hopefully we get some of that data, yep.
Um, alright, now we're gonna take a look at some of the housing conditions, including inventory, homeownership, rental housing and subsidized housing that exists today. So this illustration shows the variety of different housing types existing in the city and when they were constructed. We know that single-family homes are the most predominant, followed by multifamily over five units. As of twenty twenty-two, North Bend has approximately three thousand one hundred and forty-nine housing units, which is a thirty-four percent increase since two thousand ten and a sixty-six percent increase since two thousand. So just under a fifth of the housing stock, uh, was built after the year two thousand. Uh, when we look at the age of the housing stock, we also see that eighty-three percent of units were built before two thousand with thirty-five percent built between nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-nine, uh, thirty percent built between nineteen seventy and nineteen eighty-nine, and eighteen percent built before nineteen sixty-nine. So this is a graphic.
Real quick on that, on that last.
Yeah, let me go back.
Sorry, uh, for North Bend, so do, do, does our zoning change at five plus units? Is that a, is that a different zoning?
Yeah, yeah, so our low density, the yellow, is up to four units per acre.
Okay.
That, that, that's showing mobile homes as yellow.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah.
On the zoning map.
Yeah.
Oh, on the zoning, yeah.
Yeah, it's like triplex and all that, and then when you hit the five, then you do a new.
No, 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 the single family is single family, just.
Oh, right.
But up to four per acre.
The density thing, not a housing type.
How many units, how many types?
So usually the three to four or five plus, the difference is that you see is more like, like, I don't know that we have, our cottage doesn't.
Cause they're still individual units.
Yeah.
Uh, our DC would be the other area that would allow, but it wouldn't separate between four units or, or five units.
So is there, so I would say again, so what, what density does it change? So like when I go develop a six-pack podium retail, like above retail, a lot of cities, like the six. Once you go above six multifamily, you're in a whole different density multifamily.
Ours just varies on, if it's a mixed use, the upper floor, you, it's, it's lot area per dwelling unit. And you get about half, you get, or you get about double if it's a mixed use. It's one thousand square feet lot area per dwelling unit.
Got it.
Um, otherwise apartments and attached, like triplex, duplex are like two, two thousand to three thousand square foot of lot area per dwelling unit.
And you were saying at the beginning of the meeting, like, that's kind of the developer we're having issues attracting, right? Kind of that.
We're, no, 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 we're having issues. If you write a code for a vacant area, like you for a subdivision, to make that subdivision have different types of housing.
Oh, within the same.
Get a developer to develop it because they don't, they either specialize in single family or they specialize, they only specialize in one category. So trying to create.
And that only affects the underwriting, that's tough to pencil.
Yeah.
To mix the uses like.
Right, but that's what most people see as a nice, you, you don't want to condense all high density in one area. They would like, middle housing, you get it mixed.
How do we do in like, uh, for like a, for like, how do we generally do for the, the attraction for these smaller multifamilies? Is it kind of, we don't get a home call really ever, or is it?
There's a couple issues. So we've got our new form-based code in the downtown, which would allow that type of thing. We're seeing a little bit of that happen.
Okay.
Um, I think the primary challenge is downtown, they're all individual small lots. So to do a project, you typically have to put a couple of lots together and that's difficult.
Sure.
Um, another issue is our height limit in the downtown is thirty-five feet, the same as in our single-family zones. And so that's pretty limiting when you're considering parking and then housing typically above that to get much more than what you could with just a townhome or duplex type of.
Cause you're also flooded down there.
And then you have to raise and still have to meet height.
Mm-hmm. And we just don't have huge amounts of land left in general for anything, for like a master's, yeah.
Not, not big.
I mean, there's some land in cottage res- cottage. But that's, I think that's what we need to concentrate for median density is that cottage residential zone is opening that up from, up to other uses. Like.
duplexes and triplexes and not just cottage residential.
Um, it may or may not need to change the density.
The variance, is there a process for high variance or would that require?
There is a process, yes.
A variance has very specific regulations you have to meet and those are harder.
Yeah.
We do have a process in our code through a development agreement to apply for amendments to the code on a specific.
Property.
It's, it's a tricky subject.
But it's still, it's, it's because of our views, it's hard to get those.
Yeah.
For height.
Well, I'm sorry, you guys mentioned so I have to step out there, but, uh, you know, anything in planning, it takes time. Right? You, you make a code change, we could have made a code change four years ago. Right? You, you make a code change, we could have made this code change four years ago, that does allow somebody to do it, but nobody's moved up here to know that it's changed and allows for this now, or whatever, developing wise. So you, we may have already made the changes to allow for what we wanted to be, how much do you keep changing to change it even more? When is that, we just, it wasn't put out there, nobody knew about it, to veg it yet. Right? There's always a delay.
And, and we have vesting laws here in Washington, too, so you vest to the code that you applied for, so even if we add new regulations, they don't have to comply with those if they've already applied for a project. So, or have a complete application, at least.
All right, great. So we're going to talk about homeownership briefly, uh, which is an important topic, because it's the main way most American families, uh, generate, uh, their, accumulate generational wealth. In North Bend, the median income has grown, but has not increased necessarily at the same rate as housing values in the greater region. So according, so this chart breaks down the different income levels for households um, in terms of the percentage of breakdown in the ci- existing within the city. Uh, about forty-six percent of North Bend's overall number of households can afford the cost of a median-priced home uh, with an a- annual household income of approximately a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
So, we only have one member of the public remaining, both online and in person. Um, so I'm going to ask you, do you want us to continue to go through this, or maybe get to our questions, since it's available, or we can be-
Oh, gosh, you don't need to do that for me.
You know, I know you guys ha- saw the data previously and you have it, and will, I can add you, or, so maybe we just jump to the questions you want to ask?
Sure, so they mostly have to do with how this data resonates with you and what you think. Is there information that seems missing? Is there information that seems erroneous or wrong? Or is there something in this data that you've seen so far that really resonates with you and your lived experience? Or the lived experiences of, though, do you know?
I think maybe one thing is just in the ve- very beginning of the assessment, some big red flags or exclamation points that this data is a couple of years old and things have probably gotten worse.
Yeah.
That was, that was going to be my big comment, is that I do think this data is old, and we've had a very impactful couple of years. And so it, you know, it normally probably would be fine to use it, but I think with the current times, um, things have changed maybe even a little bit more, and you don't know, right now it's much worse than possibly it's going to be. And not too, I mean, the economy is a very part of it, too, so. Lots of factors, but I definitely think this data is probably better.
Is there someone on the-
So we need to really, just one of those.
Yeah.
Is there, is there data accessible this quarter recently? I don't, I don't agree with that.
We're using the data, the data that we need to use for our comp plan.
Yeah.
So whether there's newer data or not, that we want to plan for and make assumptions, we need this in the housing needs assessment to meet the requirements that Congress put out, basically.
Yeah, uh, that's what I get at. I don't think there is, it's, it's something that you can do other than-
There are some things that are- Twenty twenty-two data points out there that we've used for other things, but for this, we've tried to give it all.
Yeah, and that's the trick of it all, is that we want to make sure that we are selecting data points, that we have consistent data across the same year, rather than pinpoints of data throughout the last couple of years, then we have an inconsistent ones. And while this data's not the most accurate, it does still paint a portrait of what the trends have been and what we should anticipate the trends to continue to be, so.
But why are you assuming that? Because things have changed drastically in the last two years, I don't assume that.
But there's not a new census, so some data we can find, like Zillow, so we can find new housing. We might be able to, under the finance and, you know, management, things like that, get some income. But we're not going to be able to get all the data in the same year, so it's not going to look right, because some data will still be census and some data will be newer, and so.
Yeah, I, I, all that I would say is that, you know, you definitely need to let people know that two-year-old data, or, or at least know, and, and you guys consider that, you don't need to put different data points of different years, I'm just saying, just remember.
Take it into consideration in the-
The fact that we have, yeah, the things are definitely different now.
One tool that I think would be very powerful is to look at our zoning map, and if you look at the large amount of yellow, whatever percentage that is of the city, of, of least residential zoned areas of the city, probably like ninety percent, and what is the median home price of single-family homes in North Bend? Compare that to what people can afford. If, if there's a graphic that you can do to compare those two, I think that could be a powerful tool to show wow, we're really kind of oversupplied there and really undersupplied in other areas.
Yes, I have that. There you go, there's our current housing gap, so as you can see on here, there is a vast oversupply of moderate and above median income homes that you can see here, and, um, a deficit of extremely low income and low income, um, housing units that are needed in the community as of twenty twenty.
So the very low income you have, that is, we actually have, how, I wonder what those are?
Well, I think, I, but the issue still is, that, that's what this says, but I have an issue with this, we only have a four percent vacancy rate, we basically have no vacant units. So to argue that we're oversupplied in any area, both very low and high, I think is almost a false equivalent, because we don't have any vacancy in one, and so clearly, the market is handling them, but it's, it's not evenly spaced and we need it. But that doesn't mean that we're-
Well, we're displacing people that we could be keeping here, because they're somewhere else.
Yeah, but I think the issue is, we still- That developable areas that we need to consider that maybe shouldn't be single-family.
Uh, uh, are we considering the, the new buildings, the new apartments that we have coming, and?
So that'll be all part of the analysis. In the actual housing element, of stuff that's happened from the beginning of the window, the, what? Twenty nineteen, is it twenty nineteen to twenty forty-four? What's the?
Future housing, twenty forty-four, yeah.
No, but I'm trying to think of when the twenty forty-four began, but when, I know projects in the pipeline at twenty nineteen count.
Twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen, I remember.
Okay, so I think anything that's in the pipeline in twenty nineteen and forward, so all of the stuff we're building will count towards our twenty forty-four counts.
But how many units is that going to be that we have?
We have to do a full analysis on that.
You don't know how many apartments are, for-
Hundred and fifty or something, maybe? I don't understand.
Yeah.
Is that housing or is that just apartments?
Oh, because the only River Run, River Run is the, right now, the only one under construction. The other ones are considered townhomes, and so they'll be owner occupied. Now, there are parts in the other projects that will eventually, but we don't have a builder for that yet, or permits being pulled. So, but those units, because they're in the pipeline and approved, will count towards our, our count and look at that, but.
What are the units next to, um?
And we got Cave View, but those, again, are not rentals, they're condos, owner occupied.
Townhomes, yeah.
Townhomes.
There's the, is it, is it-
Habitat or owner-
Cascade lumber or whatever? Those are apartments for the right of the River Run, yep.
Yeah, that's all, that's, that's the most recent current all-apartment development going on right now.
And then where the Mule Farm used to be, those are-
A mix.
Probably a combination.
A combination, but all they've built so far are the owner townhomes.
Are they doing the, any shopping at the bottom, or is it all the townhomes? I don't know why there was, like, talk at one time, maybe way back when, of doing that, like-
So there's, there's another project that we've been trying to encourage, that's not even in a, a real project yet, but it's supposed to have commercials and residential. The other one that does have commercial and residential is being explored out. That would be the last one that had apartments with commercial on the bottom.
In part, I mean, so I participated for about seven months on a member advisory committee with Salaw, and part of it is, like, that map, we can play with that map all we want, but like, to my point, like, it's, there is a good supply of residential, but there's no water, it doesn't really matter what that map says. Like, well, oh, six months ago, or maybe less, there's a developer that wanted, I think it was around five hundred units, and they presented this to Salaw, and they couldn't, they couldn't supply the water. So, that's a five hundred unit multifamily that would fill a huge gap for that million.
Five hundred ERUs, so I think, that might have been a project, yeah, there was a bigger one that had commercial and residential, it's, it's-
So, I, I guess I'm, I'm just saying, like,
But yes.
That, that's a big issue that kind of yells in the room, too, because I think, like, that map shows very well to me, and I, I think we should address and tweak accordingly as, as our process is going. But at some point, like, there's going to be, you know, there's a break point where we can move things on that map all we want.
But unless they can get water.
Yeah, you have to have all the infrastructure.
Yep.
And, and where are we with the, well, never mind.
But I guess, yeah, I didn't want to open that up, but there is, like, there's a lot of that that we want to talk about and address, but it's going to be hard, that even just through this group, it's not going to be able to answer it.
Anything else?
Other things? Kaylin, did you want to cover, or you get most of the?
I, I think I got most of it, um. Do you want to technically inform, open the public hearing at seven thirty-one and see if anyone can speak?
All right, but I got to figure out what time it is, um, all of that.
Seven thirty-one.
All right, so, at this time, we'd like to consider comments from the general public regarding our agenda item, which is, uh, housing legislation we just received. Uh, as a reminder, there'll be no dialogue between commissioners and the public. Commissioners listening and are, are considering your comments, please note that, um, never mind, um, please, um, just, if you want to speak, raise your hand, um, limited to three minutes, state your, uh, name and address for the record. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment?
We, we've already done that, we've never commented.
All right, if there's no comment, anybody else?
Nope.
All right, and then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, all right.
Thank you. Olivia, did you have any comments or, because, you know, you kept silent during this conversation, but I want to make sure I give you an opportunity online to ask any questions, or?
Thanks.
No, I appreciate you, thank you. No, these are, um, it's lots of big pills to swallow here, to be honest. I read through this a couple of times, and it's, uh, a lot of it really surprised me. But yeah, no, no, I don't, I don't have any questions that you guys haven't already, like, talked about. You guys, it was a really good analysis tonight.
Thank you.
What we're looking for, schedule-wise, um, tend to believe we are thinking, um, uh, April fifth, we would have a, um, housing action plan introduction. And then, um, the next meeting, um, April nineteenth, we would have a, a hearing and a recommendation on that action plan. So two meetings, um, coming up on that.
And that's where strategies and-
That's where you'd actually have the doc- document and the potential strategies.
So far, on the March fifteenth, the next meeting, we have appoint PC chair.
Yeah, so.
That's on the agenda, and I guess, not sure what else yet.
Is there any reason we can't vote to add it to this agenda and just do that now?
Uh.
I don't think the public are, so. You guys want to make a motion to add an item to the agenda and appoint PC chair, we can move forward with that this meeting.
Yeah, there's time for me.
Is the current chair position up?
Yeah, it's end of each year.
The end of each year, it doesn't mean that you can't, appoint, reappoint the same person, right? It's just, we, we do it each year, so, do we have, I mean, I don't know if you're not, do you have a motion to add chair appointment and vice chair appointment to the agenda?
Yeah, I like the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
All, um, all agreed? Say aye.
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 Any, if, anyone disagree? Okay, it's going forward. So, anybody like to nominate someone to be the chair?
Well, you are the chair now, right?
Currently, yeah.
For me, you can continue, if you, if you, if it's okay. Uh, anybody else want to?
I'll, I'll continue.
Julia.
Unless, are you agreed? Okay, I'm agreed.
I think we should just nominate Hannah since she left.
That was fun.
So, I'm, I'm joking.
I know, I know.
So, we have a nomination, any alternate nominations?
Anybody else?
And who is the vice chair? Is it Olivia?
It's, it's Olivia, so we want to vote, we can vote them separate, so, all in favor of keeping Chair Torgus in his chair, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so vice chair, yeah, do, Olivia, do you still want to be vice chair?
Yeah, I would love it.
Is there a nomination?
Who would nominate Olivia as vice chair?
I second.
And a second by Susan? Any alternate motions out there?
Any comments, questions, or concerns?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Congrats to you.
Congrats. Thank you. So, if something comes up, we'll have a meeting, otherwise, I mean, we have to put these in the-
Next week, so the likelihood will have a-
Doing a meeting on the twenty-second, like?
Yes.
Twenty-second, continue the discussion, that's-
Right, so instead of having one in two weeks.
Six ago, right?
Okay.
Oh, is that during the regularly parks?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
It's in the regular park schedule.
Okay, so maybe we won't have a March fifteenth, and we'll confirm, okay.
It's, I'm saying, right now, as of right now, we don't expect it to be March fifteenth, if anything comes up, we'll get touch, but we would need to know by Wednesday, and I doubt we're going to have anything to talk about.
Why do you think on the calendar already? So I'm sure if I'm getting all-
Yeah, it might not be.
Well, we had our, it was like a-
It's a, we agreed last time to do a joint parks, as our parks meeting.
Yeah.
So we can send a calendar invite to you guys, to make sure that you're added to the, it'll be a joint.
But there isn't, oh wait, I have it on the fifteenth, so there is not a-
We, as of right now, we don't usually officially cancel it till Wednesday of next week, but as of right now, we have nothing to schedule.
I must be getting up to that, you know.
On the fifteenth, that's our normal meeting, yeah.
Yeah, you should be on those, but I don't know if you got the twenty.
So we'll send, we'll forward a calendar invite to reserve on the calendar.
Did we want to approve the minute some previous?
You weren't here.
Yeah, okay.
Good job, keep the track.
Set an adjournment time, and we're good.
All right, uh, we adjourn at seven thirty.